All right, good morning, everyone. Let's get started. If you'll stand with us, we're going to have a prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you today, Lord, and we pray that you will protect our country, Lord, you will protect our health, Lord, and be with our county, Lord, as we deal with this pandemic. I pray, Lord, you will help us make the wise decisions this morning, Lord, and guide our move that we made, Lord, for the best of our people and our county. All these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our first May meeting. Today, May 11, 2020, just after 9:00 a.m. We'll begin with item one, time for public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with our Open Meetings Act. Anyone have any general items to address at this time? All right, and as we go through here, I'll give you each an opportunity. If you would like to say something on any particular agenda item at the beginning of that item, just wave at me, let me know. We'll try to keep the conversation to a minimum while the commissioners are considering each one of these. Item number two, considering possibly approved minutes from our last meeting, the April 27, 2020, meeting.
Make a motion.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Item three, report from commissioners regarding work status. I'll start down here at the table. Commissioner Fitch.
We cleaned some ditches out on 1140. Got a pretty good drainage issue out there. We're going to be working on some more this summer. And we put in a few culverts and some of the cross culverts, we're going to be working on that drainage too, so that'll drain better. We also had some trees down and two storms have passed through since the last meeting on 2730, 1220, and 2470. One down Friday. We've been digging out some base failures and getting ready for some chip sealing on 2500 and on 2916. And we, my part-time mowing man, Jerry Ward, came to work last Monday, so we started around some mowing. And we got most of the Montcello block area, he's out there mowing. We should finish that up this week. And we still, we did some side cutting out in the Montcello area last week.
Commissioner Parker.
We spent all week, week before last, after the last meeting, picking up trees and all. We had several down in several different locations. Last week, we spent most of the week over on 3160, installing some culverts and cleaning out ditches over there. We're in the process today of, I had one that collapsed on me across the road down on 4365, and we started today replacing it. And then got another one that's collapsing on 4235. And so we're in the process of getting that, getting those installed today, maybe before this other rain hits. So we got called out again Friday on several trees down and on that one covert down there that had caved in on us. So we had to go do some patchwork on it till we could get to it today. I'd picked up the culverts on Thursday, I guess it was, in Gilmer, and got them here, but we didn't have a chance to put them in. So we had to start that today and going to try to get them in today before this other rain hits, starts tomorrow, so.
We spent all, the week before last, cleaning up the trees and stuff that the storm hit. And then this past week, we replaced two 48-inch culverts, one on 1828 and 3240. And we're processing, we got seven more smaller ones to put in this week. We're starting today getting them. And then we're going to start patching this up on the roads again. And then we had Friday, we had to go out with, there's four trees down between Argo and Sugar Hill and Talco. We had a pretty long day Friday.
We had trees down, we before that, nine, I think, across the road. And that spent most of the week. And then this week, we replaced several culverts and getting them ready for seal coating.
Who's going to be, who's going to have the first seal coat job this season?
It'll be me, because I've got, I've still got some work I've got to do and all on my roads. I can't get the weather to cooperate long enough for me to get man totally ready, so.
Anybody else close to ready?
I'm close to ready on several, little, not enough for two or three-day crew working on it. I don't have that much ready.
Rain got it. Put us back, most rain all this week, part of next week.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Item number four, discuss the Neal subdivision with possible action to follow. Here in the audience today, we've got Gary Neal. Gary is the one that's going to be putting in this subdivision. And Gary, why don't you just take a minute and tell folks where you've got your subdivision and what you're planning out there? Come on up here. People are curious.
Hi, I'm Gary. The subdivision is 30 acres, close to College Road. What is that, 1735? And what is that cut through that goes by Walmart?
4815.
Okay, so whenever it dead ends, it'll be right in front, in front of you on the right. It's 30 acres there that we've plotted out. We're going to start with seven quadplexes. We'd like to start with two, just because we want to save money, save some money, and see how that goes. And then that'll be phase one. Then we'll end up with seven on the cul-de-sac, on that, on the backside of it. The front side will have single-family lots for sale. So that'll be the process hopefully we'll get going on. If you guys like it. Yes, sir.
All right, Gary has gone through the process of completing his checklist for our subdivisions. Let me read here a letter from Sergeant Vane talking about this. "On or about December 9 of 2019, communication with Shawn Napier, Municipal Division Manager of Engineering Services and Testing, was begun in regards to the proposed Neal subdivision." This, the proposed subdivision is located at 1735 and County Road 4815 in Precinct 4. Will be completed in two phases. The first phase will consist of multifamily units constructed along a new dead-end road with a cul-de-sac to be constructed on the north side of 4815. These multifamily units will be on seven lots that range in size from 1.65 to 2.2 acres. This is in accordance with requirements listed in the Titus County Local Orders Regarding On-Site Sewage. Additionally, Mr. Napier has provided all the required documents and information as required in TAC 285.4. These documents include drawings of the proposed lots and structures and sewage disposal areas drawn specifying that disposal areas were calculated at twice the amount of water usage volume estimate for each structure as specified by the local orders. I've reviewed all the information, and I'm satisfied with the work and findings, and I feel they may proceed with the proposed Neal subdivision. In my communications, I have informed Mr. Napier of the requirements listed in the planning and development procedures as to the road construction and have encouraged that he and his clients meet with Commissioner Jimmy Parker on the matter. So from the drawings here, it looks like I see about 953, call it 1,000 feet, of new road. All these documents appear to be in order. It's a good-looking subdivision. What do we need to do regarding this new road? Have you looked at where this is going to be and such?
Yes, sir, I've looked at it. The only thing that I can see that we need is just the bond that he'll need for the road and all. And that's the only thing that I have seen that we really need.
Gary, if you'll get with Commissioner Parker and discuss road and the bond, et cetera, calculate the pricing, calculate the bond, I would suggest, based on what we've got here, everything else appears to be in order. I think it'd be a good idea to get the bond in place prior to final approval. But I think this is ready for approval on all counts pending completion of the agreement between you two on the road and getting a bond in place. Commissioners, any questions on this? Gary, anything else we need to know?
Yeah, just call me, Gary. You've got my number still, haven't you? Okay, just give me a call and probably this afternoon sometime if you can or want to, and we'll get together on it.
His number's at the top of that agenda if you don't have it there. There's one right here. The one closest to you.
If they, when they do widen that road, is that going to affect this subdivision? Far as right-of-way and stuff?
When they widen 1735.
35, yes, sir.
Good question. Are you all aware of the widening of County Road 1735?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I don't know specifically how it'll affect where you are. You could always go and talk to TechDOT. They could show you those plans there. And specifically, I think that'd be a good idea. I'm glad you brought that up, just to make sure that that's not going to cause any need to change any of your plans based on what they're doing on 1735. And that project's supposed to start, you know, next year, I'm going to say. Purchasing the right-of-way will begin, hopefully latter part of this year, and then construction perhaps in 2021. The local TechDOT office. TechDOT, the local Mount Pleasant office. I get you that information if you need that. But I think it'd be a good idea to visit with them, show them what you've got, just be sure there's no surprises there. Do you know anything about that?
No, I would worry about it just now. The phase two cul-de-sac, it's going to actually interconnect with the opposite, I'm trying to figure it out, correct?
It's going to be off that side.
Yeah, the way it appears, it was that phase one come off 4815, phase two come off of, something like that.
I don't imagine it's going to be a conflict, but it would just be good to know. Okay, thank you, Dana.
Plus, you know, we've got, when TriWater, they'll have to move that place, they'll have to find some, what they're going to do there, too.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, it's going.
Yeah, that subdivision, that, the TriWater station will have to be moved back some on there, so.
Because they'll have to re-put it up and take the old one down?
Yeah, yeah.
They'll have to get the new one up before the old one gets it, yeah.
We've got all the documents that we need. He will get with you, and once you present to him that bond where you're committing to properly building that internal road there, then I'll sign off on this. All that should be able to happen fairly quickly. No, because we're, I'm going to suggest that they go ahead and approve this tentatively with the final requirement of that bond for the construction cost on the road. And I think you can get those bonds typically within a couple of days. But he'll make sure that we've calculated the road cost so that we can calculate the right amount of the bond. All right? Okay, you want to make a motion on this, anyone?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and the motion is to approve pending.
Pending the bond.
Presentation of the bond for the appropriate amount of the road. Okay?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. Item number five, considering possibly approved the temporary relocation of the veteran service officer to the former tax collection office at the courthouse annex. Steve and I have had a couple of discussions about this, and I don't think that we're talking about making a permanent move here. Steve, why don't you tell them what you've got in mind here for having your interviews there in Judy Cook's old office?
Yes, sir. The ability to work remotely during the initial phases of the COVID, handle the in excess of 20 cases from my home during the initial few weeks of this, processing claims and benefits for veterans. But until such time as we have a vaccine available, the veteran population, including myself, are among those that are most at risk, not only age-wise, but many with underlying conditions and compromised immune systems. And if there's a box there to be checked, we check most of them, except for the handsome endeavor in there part. We haven't got that part down yet. But what I was thinking about is providing some social distancing for personal interviews, much like County Clerk has in her office petitions. And I've noticed that there's empty spaces across the street at the annex, the old automobile registration section, that those could be used to provide social distancing and accommodate the needs of veterans seeking claims and benefits. I don't see the need to transfer the technology portion of the office, such as fax machines and copiers and all that, by doing a good job of planning the individual interviews and have documentation prepared in advance for exchange. The petition areas will allow that safely. As far as needs of the county, of course, will be access to the facility. I would utilize an N95 masks, a little bit different than this. I have one here. But I'll provide those myself for my use. I will require my clients to provide a face covering. I'm not requiring that the county provide it, but it would be one of my requirements in making an appointment with a client, if they bring their own face covering. If that's something else that the county wants to consider, I leave that to you. But the only other thing that I see that we need would be hand sanitation. And that's the only thing I can think of. I would utilize my own laptop for access to Internet in case it's needed and transfer files. But I don't see the need to have the office set up over at the tax center. Okay. Again, I don't know that that's something the county needs to provide, but it would be a requirement I would have on my clients to, if they're going to come to an appointment, to have a face covering.
What about them, before they have to stand on the other side of that, during the process?
Not necessarily. They can be seated, you know, while I'm doing whatever I need to do. But most of the, most of the time will be in direct communication, because we will have talked on the phone and planned, hopefully, all the documentation that they'll need, and it'll just be an exchange of documents, explain it to them, and tell them, fill them out, bring it back, and we'll proceed from there. Right now, all current appointments or interviews are being conducted by appointment only. I keep the door locked downstairs and try to contain it as much as possible. And I must commend the county on its efforts to protect the citizens as well, environments like the Commissioner's Court. And Dave and them have done an outstanding job in helping maintain the sanitation around the courthouse and other properties of the county. They're to be commended on what they've done.
How often do you have a client there?
I would say three, four times a week possibly. Some of those are just conversations, but I never know until they actually ring the phone and make the arrangements. Right, if they would, they would have access to the outside of the annex, right, through the lobby. But they wouldn't have access to the inner sanctum of the tax office until I let them in. Just for a note for public information, we've got a, this is National Military Appreciation Month, but coming up, May 13, is Children of Fallen Patriots Day. May 15, Peace Officers Memorial Day, it's half-staffed. May 16 is Armed Forces Day. And coming up on May 25, of course, is a half-staffed, half-day Memorial Day. Thank y'all for your support.
Does anybody have a, any idea how much you're costing about, it's going to cost to get this done? Does anybody know how much this is going to cost to get it done?
We don't anticipate any cost. We're not reconfiguring any offices or anything. It's just a temporary meeting place.
Computers?
No. He's not bringing any computers up there. His phone and his computers all stay in his office. This is just occasionally when he has to interview somebody and wants to have it with that glass in between them. All right, need approval to do this?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve Steve conducting occasional interviews in the old tax office at the annex.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye. We'll give David's, I can't even remember the code on that door, but let's give David. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Item six, consider and possibly approve accepting the sole source purchase affidavit from P2 Emulsions for the following items: Stabilizer, Rejuvenator, ROC, CWE-2, CWP, and all P2 road primes. Who's going to explain all that?
You ought to, she's got the documentation.
Mr. Fitch, would you get her a microphone?
We're required, we're required to enter into the minutes that y'all are aware, I'm sorry, Mr. Riddle. We're required to enter into the minutes of the court that y'all are aware that we are purchasing items that are subject to the sole source. And that, the only thing that I'm aware of at this time is the P2 emulsions. They brought us the information, and we just need to read it into the minutes. And Judge Lee's met those requirements now, so we just need you to accept that. I believe that Mr. Parker is the only precinct that's using those materials at this time.
So this is a product that we can't get from just anybody? That it's unique to them?
Correct.
And they're, these are the ones out of Waco?
Yes.
What does sole source mean? Is that the name of the company, or is that?
Now, the name of the company is P2 Emulsions.
What does that mean, sole source?
It just means they're the only place you can get it. Rather than going through a bid-type process when we need this, we know that they're the only place we can get it, so we approve it that way. And they're the sole source provider, is that right?
No, there's other people that provide this. Ergon, right out here, provides it. They call it a different name. They got different names for it, but the same products are made by Ergon out here by Walmart.
They call it a different name, Mr. Riddle, but these items here are patented. That's the reason why no one else can provide those.
Oh, okay.
They have some patent and some proprietary method that they use to develop those emulsions.
So maybe it's a similar product that Ergon has?
It's similar, but it's something that they have developed that they're using, one of them being that ROC that I use, that I put on, that overcoat, is one of them. And they just added these others in there in case we ever needed them. I did use the stabilizer also on the road out at, on 3155, so.
All right, if you all want to approve P2 as your sole source provider.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker to approve P2 emulsions as the sole source provider on these particular products.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
No.
We have nay from Commissioner Riddle. Item number seven, consider and possibly approve the purchase of 2,000 masks and three thermometers for use by the district, county, and justice courts. We had a meeting with all the judges, the judges, the JPs, myself, and the county attorney, and the two district judges, putting together a plan that the state is requiring for opening back up our court proceedings here in the next few weeks and months. And these are two of the things that came out of that meeting, was providing masks for those to participate in this court process, especially those close quarters hearings. We're holding off on any large groups for a while, but there will be the ability to have some small hearings that are specifically very important to the district judges as those come about. And so they asked me to come up with some masks and thermometers. One thermometer for the JPs, one for the district court, and one for the county court. With the help, those were $70 apiece, total of three, total of $210. We were able to get, with the help of Chief McCray, 2,000 masks at no charge through his, I can't remember what the name of it is, through his governmental sources. No charge on those. Those were delivered last week. I've got a couple of packs here opened up so that you can see what those look like. So that was potentially as high as a $2,000 cost. We got those free. Those should last us as long as we need those, I would hope. So I'm asking you to approve the purchase of three thermometers, total of $210, that we got through Thurman's Proled Pharmacy.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve that purchase is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Thank you, Chief McCray, for getting those for us. Item eight, approve oral and written reports. I think you've got your paperwork there with you.
Make a motion, we approve the report.
Motion for approval is made by Commissioner Fitch.
Second.
Second.
Who was that? Second Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor of approval, say aye. Get you this for your signature. Item nine is our treasurer's report that Cheryl's given you.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer?
Motion to approve treasurer's reports made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor say aye. Need your signature on this as well. All right, item 10, approve budget amendments. We have no budget amendments today. Item number 11, sign pay orders and approve payment of bills.
Make a motion to pay our bills.
Motion to pay is made by Commissioner Parker. Second by Commissioner Fitch, all in favor say aye. Item number 12, closing comments. For those of you that haven't heard, Willie Williams, longtime great guy and leader in this community, passed away yesterday. So keep his wife in your prayers, please, Willie Williams. Reminder that our next court date falls on a Monday holiday, so we will have that court date 12 days from now on Friday, May the 22nd, Friday, May 22nd. Through yesterday, we had 37 cumulative cases of COVID-19 here in the county. Fortunately, a slow weekend, I think we only added a couple on Saturday and Sunday. We've now got Roger Brandon, the plant manager at Pilgrim's Pride, joining us on our call in the morning. Roger and his team are doing a very good job, doing the best that they can to control any COVID spread within that entity. And they've got, gosh, 2,800 people, I guess, working here, so that opportunity is there. Very pleased that we do not have cases in any of our nursing homes, in the jails, the areas where we're very vulnerable. So all in all, I'm very pleased. It's disappointing that the numbers continue to climb, but this is not unique to Titus County. This is happening everywhere and we're no farther out of line than anybody else. So we continue to encourage doing the things that you know you should be doing, social distancing and coffin in your sleeve and avoiding handshakes and staying home as much as possible and abiding by the new rules that our restaurants and salons are trying to abide by. We continue to encourage masking when you're in general public, especially in large retail stores, really any kind of retail establishments, but that's up to that individual store, how they deal with that. It is not a mandate of the governor, but it is a strong suggestion. So we will have our, today's meeting at 10 o'clock and see if I have any additional information today. And I'll continue to try to put that out as soon as I have new noteworthy information. Commissioner Riddle?
On this, well, this call this year is called CTIF, County Transportation Infrastructure Fund. A copy of the letter, then this year it was CERTS in 2014. And we got to apply for the grant. And I have a copy of the letter and I have a application. The letter was to you, but we have until April, May the 27th to apply for that grant.
I got that for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that. I still, they wanted, one of the questions, how much did we have? And I had how much precinct one had, but I should have known that Fitch was going to take care of that.
Well, we had a copy of what we turned in last time. And then this is what we're going to need to fill out and have Cheryl stamp it with her notary. And I've got you the road numbers and everything, you can write down all your repairs. This will be our annual road report, we need to turn that in, that's one of our things we're required to do. And this year, so in 14, we got $366,000. This year, we got, we're allowed $159,600. So the legislature gave out $250 million. So if all 254 counties apply and get their money, then we're getting $160,000 if we turn in all our paperwork. If some counties don't turn in all the paperwork, then we may get some more monies. So I'm, on the backside of this, here's the last time we did it, 14, here's what we need to fill out for this time. And we'll take it to Cheryl, we'll have it notarized and put it back in my mailbox. On the back is a list of what we want to complete this year and put down, I'd say, I mean, you don't have to put everything in the world you're going to do, we'll too. I'm going to, I'm trying to keep up with pretty much everything I'm going to do. They're only going to look at about $40,000 with the work tax dollar getting back with us and say, oh yeah, you did that on that one road. So then we'll get our money afterwards sometime next year, get the check. So I've got the application and I'm in touch with the lady Allison in Austin. I'm not sure who I'm going to be contacting in Atlanta office, but this Allison has called me and she's made sure I turn the application in correctly. So I'll get with her, I can turn it in Friday, come get this done by Friday and have Cheryl notarize it and swear in front of her and then put it in my mailbox. I'll send all that in and we'll be good to go.
We submit that as a county rather than individual precincts?
Yeah, as a whole county.
One application?
Yeah, and then we'll divide, we all, each precinct should get around $40,000. Maybe a little bit more if it's not all taken up during, which will be easy to prove.
But that $150,000 was the amount unique to Titus counties. Bigger counties get more, smaller counties get less?
Yeah, some counties got $2 million. But we are considered a economically disadvantaged county. There's only 70% of counties in the state that are, so that may apply for us to get a tad more dollars. That's due to the census, that shows you how important the census is.
And even though we submit projects that far exceed that amount, it's not going to hurt to put too many projects?
Turn in projects that exceed it in case we get extra monies. And then they can say, oh yeah, you're approved on that, and they'll get back with us on that. Mr. Riddle's done it before, 14, they did it once before, so. That's a good program. Also, the safety program-
Grab your mic there, just out of your- Safety program we're in with TAC. Last year we got $1,200, $1,240, this year we got $1,651. So there's items you can buy. So I try to get a package deal where we all get kind of the same thing. Last year we bought traffic cones. This year I went through all the items that, they pick out all the items for us. And so if you look up a category with Granger, most of the stuff, you're only allowed to buy certain things. So what I bought was some leather safety gloves and a few pairs of eye protection, safety glasses, and some small magnetic suction light bars that are amber and white that you can put on your pull truck or take it off, plug any cigarette lighter on your backhoe. I've got one, it's one of my own personal light bars, I just put it on my mowing tractor. It looks like an ambulance coming down the road mowing, so. They're real handy, you just plug them in. That mower catches a lot of traffic on the road, so that'd be a good safety item. So I was glad of that, so that's absolutely free through TAC, that's a good deal. And then also I give you a report on the FCC, on the, doing our market modification for Dish Network. They declined it, so they rejected us. It was kind of, when it got all into it, it's kind of like going to court with their lawyers and the communications lawyers from all these people that own territories. And so they have changed the laws and just within the last year since we started to file on that, they're cracking down on it and with KLTV's last device we got from them, it's almost impossible for us to get this done at this time without really investing lawyers and there's no hope that they can get it done. So the only two counties in Texas that got it done were two counties, Panola and Harrison County, right on the state line, and they said, due to them being on the state line, back when it just got started, the requirements were less, now they're really cracking down. And that's across the United States. It was something to do with some big lawsuit they had in Colorado. So we did our best, we passed three out of the five requirements. So what I've done since then is contacted my congressman again and senators. And I also got Cole Hefner involved and told him what we were doing and trying to get their help to bring this up with the FCC. And I wrote the White House, so I wrote Donald Trump and Mike Pence. The only person to ever answer me was the White House. And so they're going to take their people from the White House through Trump and go back to the FCC and bring it up. So they give me a report on it, I don't know what they can get done. But I went from the bottom up, maybe I'm coming from the top down. And our argument this time was, due to pandemic going on, we need our local information, you know, for health through news, local news. And so that may be a big plus for us, I don't know, I'm just trying another angle. So that's where that stands at this time. So another thing I want to bring up is, y'all probably been chastised too about that we let too many people in our meetings. And it's not a legislative order that we can't allow 10 people in our meetings, it's recommended. But the state law overrules that, so the governor's not going to overrule that. We can allow as many as we want as long as we're social distancing. And so that's why we've allowed more than 10 in our meetings. And we need a Griesel judge, and if we get too crowded, we were going to put it on the steps one day. And we didn't have to do that, so. We've all got those warnings from TAC on what that was on the lawyers and the Attorney General's opinion why we can't, we had to allow the public as many people that want to come to a commissioner's meeting. So that answers that, and that's all I have.
Thank you for doing that.
By Friday, get those by Friday.
Thank you for doing that and heading that up and for your efforts on that FCC deal. That's disappointing, but I don't guess that it comes as a big shock to you, and I understand.
No, once I got into it, there's several counties in Georgia who have teamed up with their local architects, like our council of governments, and they're going to try to get some monies together and get, hire them a law firm and fight a law battle, it's probably 50 grand. And there's still no guarantee that they're going to get it, so I'm going to watch, see what they do just in case something would come up where we could get some help on it. But at this time, we can just wait and see, see what happens.
Make sure, Applewhite? I just got a text message, this must be brand-new news. Our former treasurer, Debbie Ray, passed away. I don't know if that was today or if that was yesterday.
No, it was yesterday or Saturday. I think it's Friday or Saturday.
Friday or Saturday.
Services are when? Today?
Services are at 2:00 today.
2:00 today, Debbie Ray. Where are the services? Where, east?
East, where?
East New Hope, Grace Side. Okay. Thank you all, appreciate everybody coming. We will close with a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion to adjourn is made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor say aye. Thank you.